So it's seven o'clock and we will call the meeting to order. Uh, start with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Patterson.
She called and it was not able to attend tonight.
Oh, here. I know we got an email from him saying he wouldn't be able to attend tonight. Merlington. And Mrs. Naprowski.
Here.
Conley's here. Of course, we also have um our city manager and city planner and our city clerk here this evening. So the next thing we need to do is look at the minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three and see if we could approve those. Here we go. Anything that we need to address in the minutes before we approve them?
I'll make a motion to per the minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the November minutes, please signify with I.
I.
I, all opposed. Feedback here, okay, motion carries, we have minutes, um. Next, we need to approve tonight's agenda, of course, on page one of your packet. We need to make any amendments to the agenda or anything else before we move on? Then I'll move that we approved the agenda. Support. Favor approving the agenda, please signify with I.
I.
I, all opposed, we have an agenda. Okay, next, um, public comments. So uh, would anyone either in the room or online, if there is, would like, would they like to have a public comment this evening? Hey, I'm sorry, I have a hair.
Hearing done.
Close the public kind uh, public comments and move on to conflicts of interest and ex parte communication. Uh, any planning commission member have either of those to report this evening? Okay, well. All corruption tonight, good to hear, um. Uh, scheduled public hearings, there are none, so we'll move past that. Uh, no site plan reviews either, which gets us all the way to item ten in the first three minutes. During. Other business, proposed sign ordinance.
Well, you guys asked that I uh, just go nuts on a sign ordinance, so that's what happened to get it. This is, of course, a draft, so we can continue to work on it, we can adjust as we go however we want, so you know, we are by no means married to what's in front of you, but with the intent of continuing to simplify um, sign ordinance and make it more workable, we've um, attempted to do that, I I think we eliminated about six pages or something, so from the twenty-four, whatever, we're down to sixteen, which is awfully long, but it's an improvement, I think. Um, and explain rationale for for some of these changes here as we go forward. Um, so if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just start at the beginning and we'll just kind of go through section by section here.
Sure.
Um, in thirty-two, six fifty, I did not change anything. Um, it's long, but I think it's really important language, especially in light of read that we keep that. Um, so we didn't propose to change any of that, the definitions, which start on page two. Um, thirty, starting with thirty-two, six fifty-one, we made a few adjustments here. Um, a lot of this is just kind of clarifying things, so um, like the term mansard, that refers to a roof, I think you're all familiar with 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 what that is. Other terms in here that that we deleted, like manual sign, moving sign and multi-vision sign, were not used anywhere in the ordinance. Um, and so there's other language that we've used in there that we think is is better than just cluttering up the definitions. Um, so we just took those out because they're not used. Um. Each and wall is not used, and if it is, we can just use the term mural, so again, we're just looking to kind of simplify all of our definitions here. One of the things that I was a little surprised to find is that you did not include any definition for or regulation of off-premise signs, so we actually added a new definition for that. Um, an off-premise sign being something where the sign refers to something that's not located on the same property. So if you sign here at the corner on Main Street and it's pointing you down, you know, four blocks that way, that's an off-premise sign. Um, and despite it being content-based, I think that is something that 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 we can regulate, even though it's written that way, there was uh, one of the concurring opinions in that Supreme Court case specifically said that the Supreme Court was not intending to regulate off-premise signs, so I'm I'm comfortable with that in here for now. Um, unless the attorney, you know, doesn't like it when we get to that point. Um, on page four, we clarified what a portable sign is, and it seemed like there's a little bit of confusion here. Um, the way that it was written before, it seemed like basically anything that was movable was considered a portable sign, which is 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 true, I think. Um, but what this is really referring to or what or what I think it intends to refer to are those signs that have like the wheels on them? Or sometimes there are those black ones with the neon letters and they have those kind of legs that stick out and they just sit on the ground and they're just meant to sit there for like a couple of weeks and they usually have changeable copy on them of some kind. Um, that's, I think, what a portable sign is, or that's what this ordinance, I think, is intending to regulate, and that's how we've referred to them before, so we cleaned up that definition a little bit, yes.
Just for a second for clarification, um, for planning commission members, I know I was having trouble finding this. Uh, so the first section looks like what it was before with no markup, and then like we're in page, the portable sign thing he was just talking about is on page twenty-six. So.
Yes.
Meanwhile, I had to scroll through the whole first one and then find the second one before I could.
Yeah, I sent a clean copy and then a red line copy, so I'm using the red line copy on my screen, okay, yeah.
So page twenty-six is where I am now, and I'll try to help if we get lost, since our lines don't match up. Twenty-six of our pages.
Um, and then we clarified with this definition for for portable sign that a sandwich board, which would probably fit that definition, is not going to fall into what we would call portable sign, because we allow those. Um. Temporary sign, again, just to clarify that a little bit, um, any sign intended for a limited period of display, we would call a temporary sign. Sign that's not used in the ordinance, so we just got rid of that. The text that you see on the next page where it says signs mounted on the face of a mansard roof shall be considered wall sign. That's in green because we actually moved that from the definition of mansard a few pages up. Uh, we just felt like it fit better uh, under the definition of a wall sign, so that's what it says, right, we're including that in the definition of a wall sign, so we felt like that was a better place to put it. Um. All the additions, we pretty much left it on, most of them were fine. Um, there's just a few things in here that for clarification purposes, we we felt like adjusted. In thirty-two, six fifty-two prohibited signs. Um, so there's a couple different references in the ordinance to signs with flashing, blinking, scrolling, moving parts, blah, 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 so we deleted the definition for a moving sign, we took language from elsewhere in the ordinance that prohibited, you know, scrolling text and flashing and animated stuff and video and all that stuff, we just put it all right into the subsection two on what is prohibited, so um, hopefully that's a little more clear. And similarly, under subsection four, um, there was a different, again, there was a different section of the ordinance that talked about um, signs that uses that use terms like stop, look, danger, whatever, things that are meant to confuse people. Um, so again, this all sort of falls into that same bucket of signs that are attempting to uh, distract or confuse or mislead people and thinking that it's a government sign or some sort of official-looking sign when it's really just an advertisement. Uh, so we kind of put all of that stuff into subsection four. Subsection six and eight, so roof signs unless specifically permitted elsewhere in this article. Um, one, roof signs aren't specifically permitted anywhere in that article, so we took that part out. Then under number eight, poll signs must specifically permitted elsewhere in this article. Um, to me, anything if it says unless it's specifically permitted in this article, then it's not really prohibited. Anything is prohibited if it's not specifically listed elsewhere in the article, so that seemed kind of unnecessary language to put in there at all for in 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 our opinion, so that's why we took out that subsection eight with respect to poll signs, because we do allow poll signs at the highway commercial district um, up by uh, one thirty-one. Um, so in subsection, next page on subsection twelve, that's that language I was talking about with danger, look, stop, that we just moved that up in its other section because we thought that all kind of fit together. And then we added off-premise sign as a prohibited sign type. Um, that's something that you might want to think about, there is, you know, could be there are some businesses who will want to do those and they will probably be able to articulate some value if they have a business, it's not located directly on Main Street, maybe it's a couple blocks over. Maybe it's a church or something, it might have want to have a small sign on on the corner that says or just two blocks this way or that way, I've seen those before. Um, I don't, I don't like them, especially in this content neutral world, because I feel like they can get a little out of control if you're not careful, so for now, I've proposed that they be prohibited, but I think that's something worth thinking about as we kind of work on this.
Be a special permit or special? That's opening a big can of worms.
Yeah, you could do like a special use, but I don't know that I'm not a big fi- a big fan of doing special land use permits for signs, because signs aren't really land uses, generally speaking, unless like a billboard, we don't have any of those.
Special use that they would want, so how do you definition, what is and what isn't?
Yeah, and I don't know that if you like the public hearing process for someone to put up a sign.
Too burdensome.
And I'm glad that we're addressing the off-premise signs, because it's been a while, but we used to have a person who had a sign up on uh, up on Muskegon to advertise for their downtown business, that was a big flashy letter sign that they you tow to the side of the road. And uh, it was quite unsightly and not the way to do it, if you ask me.
Yeah, it's not something that was addressed in your previous ordinance, which made it kind of prohibited by 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 default, because it wasn't listed in here, but I kind of prefer to specifically list it in here along with the other signs that we definitely are just, again, no ambiguity. As this is proposed, it's just simply not allowed.
Put his sign up because the one place he posted it was in the township. Little sliver right next to Muskegon, Maine. So then what can we do, and he rotated it back and forth in his little trailer and he was quite a character.
I mean, you have to get the township to do the same thing, and then even then, you'd have a non-conformity issue to worry about, so can't, you can't solve them all, I guess.
City, we can solve that.
In thirty-two, six fifty-three, we have, so yeah, so we just call this exempt signs, so these are signs that don't require a sign permit. Um, provided that they comply with the following section. Um, so some, some of this here, like where I deleted under A one, which are, that's just me, just unnecessary text. Trying, I'm doing everything I can to make this shorter, darling, so.
Thank you.
That means two words, we'll get out, we'll we'll take our two words. Um. Um. Let's see here. See, forward, so that's even here, so we moved that down to a different section of the ordinance. Um, again, so a a lot of the stuff, drive-through vehicle or drive-through window, vehicle, driving lane, I think we just say drive-through lane, and we all know what we're talking about, so again, a lot of cleanup stuff here. Um, murals. Um, we just basically consolidated the text of subsection A and B and stuck it into that little predicate statement on the on the top paragraph, so the regulation is here, um, I guess I'm not sure why we were making a distinction between twelve square feet an area or less versus twelve square feet an area or more. Um, a mural in the downtown relating to the theme of a business painted on the side of a building. Um. There, to me, a a mural is art, and I don't know, I personally wasn't sure what the point of distinguishing twelve square feet, that's not very big, I mean, twelve square feet is three by four, that's not particularly big, we're talking a hundred or something, that would be one thing, but
like they were basically trying to restrict murals unless unless the city gave approval.
Well, there was a push to get them, several buildings in town. Into play and uh, they really didn't reduce the size of them because the size of the building dictated how big it would be.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah. If we had two of them.
So we, for now, remove that twelve-square-foot distinction. Um, again, part of it is 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 because you know, only distinction, it says it can be more than twelve square feet if it enhances the architecture of the building as determined by the planning. So one that brings a mural to you that gives you a discretionary decision with not a lot of guidance in terms of what enhancing the architecture of the building even means in the first place. Um, so again, that's, that's our, our thinking here is to just eliminate that that simple dis- distinction. We kept the the stuff about raised borders, raised letters, raised characters and all that, meaning mural is intended to be painted, not a three-dimensional representation. Um, we thought that might help to simplify it a little bit. And then, of course, government signs. And many words, government signs, there's any, any government sign, state, federal, city. Uh, you can put up whatever, whatever sign you want, however you want, the biggest you want or as small as you want. Um. There's thirty-two, six fifty-four requirements for all signs. Um, didn't make a ton of changes here, um, under subsection B. Does this, so this is an interesting one, it said the side and rear setbacks shall be the same as that required for the main structure or building, which is fine. Provided that all non-residential signs be at least a hundred feet from any residential district. Um, that seems potentially unworkable to me in some of the areas where you have commercial or mixed use. The residential zone, or if you have like a church or a non-residential building within or adjacent to a residential zone. That might have the effect of just totally prohibiting those businesses from having anything at all unless they get a variance. Um, so I was at that hundred-foot setback felt like a lot to me, um, so we were comfortable with this real, with just relying on the district standard. That only applies to the side and rear, so the front yard, obviously, you're not going to apply like a thirty-foot setback to the sign. When you're talking about how far it is from that side lot line where the bus the next one, that's where we want to maintain the same type of setback as you would have for a building. Sounds good. Um, under clear vision area, we just, everything else says feet, so we just changed the twenty-four inches to two feet, again, for consistency's sake.
Yes, and you lost like three letters by doing that, so.
Um.
On a red ink.
Under subsection for uh, uh, for illumination, a window sign may consist of illuminated letters, including neon and other. Um, so I think your typical open sign or whatever that has neon letters. Um, that's in green because it's moved, if you look uh, on the next page, subsection seven, regulating maintenance and construction, it has the same language. I'm fine with the language, but this is pertaining to a window sign that's illuminated, and so we put it in the illuminated portion of the ordinance, the interest organizational thing, really. Um. Section G on the next page. Um, simplified language somewhat, kept the uh, the, the basic purpose is the same, we want addresses with at least four-inch letters on it, so the fire department knows the address of the of 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 the building, we can see it in case of an emergency. Um. There's, you just tried to make it fewer words, but say the same thing. Um, thirty-two, six fifty-five under sign measurement in area. There's a few spots in here where this refers to a parallelogram, and I'm I'm, I was surprised to see that because I can see some creative sign company like drawing angles, you know, like a rhombus or something around their sign, where if you actually drew a, a square or a rectangle with ninety, with ninety-degree angles, maybe they wouldn't get where they wanted to be, and I haven't seen it before. Typically, we s- with a sign like this, when you have an unusual-shaped sign, you just draw a box around it and that's your sign area. Or if the sign is a circle, sometimes they'll just say if it's a regular geometric character, a circle, a rectangle, an octagon or something like that, a lot of ordinance will just say you just if it's, if it's a fairly normal shape, you take the area of the shape. If it's a weird shape, then you just put a box around it. Um, and either or, either rectangle or a square, and then that's your area. So we took out re- references to a parallelogram in here again, just because um. It's really confusing for one, and two, I can see someone trying to somehow get a couple, you know, six square inches more assigned to Jive somehow.
But think of all the opportunities for training in geometry we're losing.
Don't know.
Yeah, so also here, um, just clean up stuff in terms of, in terms of measuring area, we're not making any, any substantial changes there. Um, on thirty-two, six fifty-six on the next page, uh, related to digital signs. Um, we have some, again, trying to just simplify this and clean it up a little bit. So in B one, B three, industrial, excuse me, those are allowed only as part of the ground sign. The H C district, we can have digital signs on either a ground sign or on a poll sign. Um, and in the mixed-use district, only as part of ground sign and only for non-residential uses. Um. Since we can't regulate content, the reason for that is because we don't want churches or find, things like that, but we don't want individual residents putting out electronic reader boards on their property for obvious reasons.
There's an opportunity lost, I'm I have some things to say.
Right. Under B one, uh, with respect to digital signs. Um, typically see language like this, um, where it says a digital sign cannot be more than seventy-five percent of the allowable sign area. That kind of language is pretty normal, so if you have a digital sign, you have to have a quarter of that has to be just a regular sign that says you know, Joe's Crab Shack on it, and then underneath that, you can have the the remaining seventy-five percent of the sign can be digital with whatever they want to put on there. Um, we added this predicate statement here that says in which case up to one hundred percent of the sign area may be digital. Um, I think that's the intent here, because the way that it's written currently just says it can't be more than seventy-five percent, except for signs which are twenty square feet or less in area. But it doesn't say what happens in that instance, so we're assuming the intent here is to say if it's a small sign, less than twenty-four square feet, then okay, fine, the entire thing can be digital, so we just wrote that in here again, so it's clear. Um, item two, this, this deleted three lines here, that's what we moved up to the prohibited sign section that we talked about earlier. Um, under the new subsection two, it talks about, it talks about illumination. Um, there was, it wasn't so, again, this, this is saying the same thing, hopefully with 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 less text, in the old ordinance or current ordinance. You know, it says, um, the sign should not be of such intensity or brilliance as to impair the vision or distract or be a distraction to a motor vehicle driver with averagias that otherwise interfere, blah, 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 like basically turn your sign down at night, is what we're trying to say here. Uh, so we had this, uh, the sentence here in the fourth line that says a digital sign shall use automatic day, day-night gaming software to reduce illumination intensity of the sign at night. And in no case shall the sign be of such intensity or brilliance as to impair the vision of or distract uh, the driver or interfere with the effectiveness of a traffic sign.
The old one had a specific amount of time that this, that it could change. So it didn't cause a distraction, and I think that's.
So the very next line here, subsection three, um, this has the ten-second interval between changing the message, and then the actual message has to change within one second. Um, so you can't have text that slowly fades out, it's because we don't want people driving and then staring off at the sign for an extended period of time, so so we want this, the sign message on on an electronic reader board to just switch almost instantly. Um, ten seconds feels a little long to me, but it's fine, I have no problem with it.
When we put this ordinance together, the the council and the planning were very critical on how fast the message changed and how fast it scrolled.
Yeah.
Because of the volume, traffic and everything on nature, they did not want a distraction.
Yeah, and and with uh, with as many LED screens, um, and because a a a lot of signs basically now have like what looks like a TV in it, right, you have, the, it's not just text, now they have, you know, high-end graphics and fairly high, high-definition videos in some cases and all this other stuff, and that's all things that we're trying to more or less get, you know, get rid of, so there's too, it's too much distraction. If you're in a car and it creates an unsafe environment, so um, ten seconds for the message and then accomplishing that change in in one second or less, and then not having any, any moving or scrolling or anything like that. Um, because it's hard to read when it's moving, and then if text is moving and you're driving or there's some other animation going on. Um, I think there's a a legitimate connection there between health and safety, obviously, um, and and what we're trying to do here, so they have as many messages on there as as they want, if they want to scroll between a hundred and fifty different messages programmed in there, that's fine, but each one can stay there for ten seconds, then it has to switch to a new message within one second, but they have another ten seconds, they can switch again. Um. The rest of this is the same here. Um, temporary signs, so we briefly discussed last month whether or not temporary signs should require permits or not. For now, the old language is left in here that makes them exempt from permitting, but we highlighted it for discussion purposes. Um, so if a temporary sign is placed in connection with a temporary event, um, it may be installed concurrent with the event and shall be removed upon the end of the event. Um, size and number shall be as specified with the niche district, so we'll get to the district standards in a minute. Um, most of the other stuff is is the same. Um, we deleted the sentence here that says a temporary sign shall be only internally illuminated. Um, why did I delete that? Might have been that we just aren't allowing most of them to be illuminated at all.
Right, they're not, the reason I think that was because there's so many signs they want up on the crosswalk. And they end up having power on it, and there'd be lit signs, and those are designed to be taken down right after the event. They did, somebody would monopolize one spot on there, and ultimately with a battery pack, they'd end up illuminating.
Okay, I I I I see what I did here, so we'll get to this part in a minute, but that's, 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 that's a great point. Um, under number eight, we just say that no sign listed as a prohibited sign can be used as a temporary sign, again, that should be obvious, but but all the sandwich board stuff, because a sandwich board to me is a type of temporary sign, we moved all the sandwich board language into this. The standards are, I think the standards are fine, I don't think we need to change any of those, but I think this is a more logical home to them. Um, in thirty-two, six fifty-eight, since uh, everyone said they liked tables so much, we went crazy with the tables. Um, so this is the same as it was before. Change anything here, except you'll see in the cable, we have the little superscript one in there here and there, just because uh, in order to keep all this regulation and keep it simple, we had to add add some, some, some references in here. Um, so temporary signs have to comply with thirty-two, six fifty-seven. Uh, you'll see in in these tables, it will say ground sign and wall sign and temporary sign and this, sometimes it'll be or it'll say this sign and this sign or one of these, so you can kind of go through and tell them what kind of sign is is allowed, and we'll get into that more as we get into the commercial districts. This stuff, yeah.
Mr. Moore, when I was reading this about the sandwich board signs. Um, on A, it talked about that you could put, uh, unless I'm reading this On A, it talked about that you could put, uh, unless I'm reading this wrong. It looked like it said that you could put a sandwich board within a public sidewalk. But then on F, it said that no sign shall be located to interfere with vehicle or, or pedestrian traffic. So that confused me, how you can say, oh, you can put it on a sidewalk. But then you can't put it, so that, that confused me.
Yeah, and the, the, um. Here is two, so, so sandwich boards, we typically see them downtown, right? Um, the intent is for them to allow them to put them on this, on the sidewalk and maybe in the. More like in the parkway is probably the best, the space of them, because we want there to be like a solid. Six or eight feet or however wide the sidewalk is, like a clear. Way for people to walk back and forth, so we want them to basically. Putting it out in the sidewalk is fine, or in, in the right of way, but not literally in the middle of the sidewalk. People that are wheelchairs or using assisted, the, the device of some sort, we don't want them running over, getting, you know. Stopping the way basically, so yes, it can be in the sidewalk, but you have to move it, so you're not. Well, it's not literally in the middle of the sidewalk.
Okay, I was just double checking, because I was like, that seems like.
This does, um, because this requires permission from the city council or manager. If and when somebody comes in and asks for a new one of these, that can be something that would be easy to. Um, communicate to them or, 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 or to write on a permit to say, yep, this is fine, just don't put it in the way where people are gonna, are gonna trip over it.
When we enacted that sign, the sandwich board sign. Almost certain, or I thought it to be that, uh, the owner of the sign had to provide some type of insurance. That if, if somebody was injured or anything, their business had to cover that liability. Permit that they have and then, yeah.
And do we have, is, is there a permit for a sandwich board, you know? It's really like twenty-five dollars permit.
Then they waived it because there was hardship on the new businesses and, yeah.
Okay, so thirty-two, six fifty-eight, we looked at last month, we have, with any change there, this, this is the simplest section here for times. Um, thirty-two. Nine, so this is where we, we separated out the B two, which is your CBD. This is for signs in B one, B three, H. I one. Here you'll see we have some of these and or statements in here on the leftmost column, so you can have a ground sign and a wall sign or an awning sign. So if they want a wall sign and a canopy sign, the answer is no, is one or the other with those. And they can and a, a window sign and a temporary sign. You'll see for the temporary signs, it says under illumination permitted over on the far right, it says yes, internal only. That's why we deleted that sentence up above, because again, we're gonna say it in two words here instead of the entire sentence somewhere else. Couple of other things we did is, so there was some language in this, in this, this, in the zoning ordinance now that talks about wall signs. And they have to face the street, but then if it doesn't face the street. But it's within two hundred feet of the street, then you can also put one on that wall or something to that effect. I think it's much easier to say that if it's facing, if the wall of the business is facing the street. Or a parking lot, you can have one sign on that wall. So I kind of checked around like, so this came in when we did, when we looked at the sign a couple of months ago for the taco place that I was all excited about. Um, initially, it, it, uh, it, my thinking was, it didn't look like this allowed it. In its location, but there was this language that said, well, if it's within two hundred feet of the street, then you can have another sign on, then you can have the sign on that building wall, but. There's also a parking lot there, so adding this language that says. It's facing as well or a parking lot, I think solves all of our potential problems by, because I'm, I'm getting rid of some other stuff that I think is too confusing. Just if the sign faces a parking lot, then we're just going to allow for one wall sign on that, on that side of the building. Uh, this, this, so the square footage of these signs, I guess this is just an observation. Some of these are pretty big, so a hundred square feet for a ground sign to me is quite large. For a wall sign is pretty big. Um, a hundred square foot for a pole sign to me is, is also fairly large.
That's huge.
So I'm not. Not necessarily saying that you have to make them smaller, but as, as a general observation, I think maybe they're fairly generous. Sign sizes in my, in my experience. Like in low, most are signed requirements half that, it's fifty. Um, which we get some grief about that from people, that might be a bit too restrictive, but I think it works. But we tried to put all the written standards and just stick them into a table. Uh, but there's a lot of little superscripts in here that we have to, to, with, so like for a ground sign. Ordinance permits one per frontage, but if your frontage is three hundred feet or more, then you can have two on that one frontage, which I think is fine. Um, so that's what superscript, uh, number one refers to. Industrial park entrances, get one additional ground sign at the entrance of the park of at least seventy-two square feet. Three and awning or canopy sign can't project over an alley or private access lane or extend more than two feet from the building, that's pretty typical. Um, number four is a type of. Temporary sign, we specifically referenced the sandwich board. Number six, pole signs are permitted in the HC district in lieu of a ground sign, so you can't have both a pole sign and a ground sign, it's again. One or the other, but not both. And then seven, if someone comes in with plans for a brand new pole sign, we want those sealed. By an architect or somebody, so we know that it's structurally sound. That's a good idea. So putting that in a table chewed, uh, ate up about a page and a half or two pages worth of text, which we were happy to. Of course, we made it longer by making it a, a new table for thirty-two, six sixty, a couple of pages down. This is signs for the downtown district only. Pretty much the, the, the exact same setup here, so a wall sign. Or an awning canopy or, or marquee sign and a projecting sign and a window sign and a temporary sign are all allowed types of signs, so. You can't have a wall sign. Uh, and a marquee sign, you gotta have one or the other, but then you can also have those other types that are listed here, projecting window and temporary.
Are we still sticking with box signs are prohibited? We've had huge discussions about box signs, and I'm like. I didn't know, and I'm looking at you, Ms. Darla, because I'm like. That's what you decided, so okay, we're sticking with that, okay. I'm just double checking because I saw that and I'm like, oh.
So you'll see in, 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 in these tables, we've tinkered with, uh, with the headings a li- a little bit based on the districts. Um, so, so, so we have this design and location requirement, so for wall sign, it says box signs are prohibited for that C two district. So yes, for now, we're, we're sticking with that if that, if everybody was comfortable with that.
That's, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that that was okay. Cause that was a big, huge. Discussion, so, thank you.
Keeping everything that's in the ordinance presently, so ten percent of the wall area, a hundred square feet. So your, the old ordinance also says whichever is greater in a few of these instances, and to me, ten percent or a hundred square feet with, with. Excuse me, with whichever is less. Feels like a more reasonable standard. Projecting signs cannot extend vertically above the roof line of the building, they typically don't, but. With awnings, canopies, marquees, et cetera. A window signs can't take up more than twenty-five percent of the window area. There's some language in here about window signs that refer to like those decal thing, things that you can get that. Basically cover the whole window, then they look like they cover the whole window, but they're sort of transparent. Um, they're, you know, like these perforated decal, file decal things that, that you can put on those. Honestly took that out because I think it's way too confusing, I don't really wanna sort of calculate like the area of the holes, perforations or anything, so. I think to me, it's, 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 it's reasonable to allow someone to take up a quarter of their window space in the downtown with, with signage. I think that allows for plenty of visibility when coupled with a wall sign and a projecting sign.
Did you, uh, what about feather signs? Cause we discussed that in the B two. And we, we didn't really wanna do feather signs in the B two, and I don't really see that in the regulations there. I was wondering. Is that under temporary, because?
Cause they're a short term.
Yeah, people put them up like cell signs and stuff, but they can also get. Cause windy days, they blow around and if they're not.
That might be something that was, that's listed as a.
All feather blades or flutter blades.
What section?
In definitions.
Yeah, under the definitions. Yes, actually, so we'll, no, that's, that, that's a good observation, so we'll need to do something with. Is the sense that we want to permit those as a type of temporary sign?
Been disallowed forever.
Yeah, and I'm looking at.
Once you open that door, it's.
I'm looking at Ms. Darla, wondering, I, I would like to get her. Effect on that.
And are we thinking differently for the B two than for the other districts, or are we talking, or just for the B two at this point?
Well, right now, I was looking at the B two because I'm thinking about, uh, walking. I mean, we've already got, uh, sandwich boards out there, now you throw up, uh, feather signs. And if you've got projecting si- like awning signs, yeah, well, those are usually above your head, but. You know, now we've got too much going on, I say just leave the sandwich boards, keep the feathers off.
Yeah, I don't like the feathers downtown because of the motion aspect of it. It's in your peripheral vision, when you're trying to navigate through a heavily, hopefully heavily pedestrian. Feel sight as you're driving, you don't need this moving object on the side to draw your attention away, and those things move. That's what they're designed to do.
So yeah, I think, I think keeping those out of the B two, off the other districts.
Because all those cause our code enforcement a lot of work, they gotta keep following up on it and following up on it. They pop up one day, and they take them down, and a week or two later, they're back. It was just, just.
Not so valuable, that, I feel like we're missing anything.
Let's not have them, they have enough opportunity to do signs. Permanent.
Okay, so just put them in the band, sign thing, thank you very much.
Thank you. Cause you said exactly what I was thinking too. Under number ten, non-conforming signs, we didn't feel the need to make any, any changes there. Same thing with six sixty. Two with respect to dangerous, unsafe, abandoned, et cetera. Issues there. Permits and application procedures. Most of this was fine. Use minor modifications will, that would be made here. Number, so we proposed to delete number. By, you know, copy of stress chasing calculations showing that the. You know, one, having them turn that in, I don't know that we'll be able to make anything out of that in the first place. And so under number nine, where we think it makes more sense to just say that, you know. In the city manager's discretion, they may require the plans to be sealed, because that's really what we're looking at here. If someone, if a licensed architect or engineer stamped it. Sounds crazy to me, that's, they're going, they're assuming the liability for that design, and that's, I mean, I'm not qualified to evaluate. Under item C fees, we deleted that simply because again, I don't think that sentence is necessary, we just, under item A, we require. Uh, a permit from the city and payment of a fee as required, I think that language is sufficient instead of having a paragraph about fees. Six sixty-three is fine, six sixty-four is fine. Um, so six sixty-five appeals and variances. This is interesting, most of our zoning ordinances do not contain any specific, so this, this ordinance as it's. Been right now. Um, has a bunch of special variant standards that apply only to signs, so if somebody can't comply with a sign, they will apply for a variance. That provides these seven standards that would be considered by the zoning board of appeals. In, in considering whether or not to modify the zoning ordinance and grant this person a variance from the sign standards. That's, that's. It's something that you can do, I'm so. Puller alert, we propose to take it out. Because. Not that it's, so. I think the reason why it's in here is because under the normal variant standards, the CBA would, would, would be considering, you know. On the unique and unusual circumstances of the land or self-created hardships or those kinds of things. Under those ordinary circumstances, it's gonna be really hard, if not impossible, for ninety percent of your. Applicants to get a variance for a sign. Most of the time, a sign variance, what are they asking for? A bigger sign. And so. It's gonna be virtually impossible for them to say. I'm not capable of putting up a smaller sign, I have to have one this big, it's this incredible hardship to put up. And it would have to be extra, really bizarre circumstance where like their sign would be completely invisible, but for getting advantage or something to that effect. To really arise to, to the level of granting one, and so I think the intent of this language that we're proposing to delete is to make it a little bit easier. For people to get variances for signs, I don't. Agree with that philosophy, but that's, I think the thinking behind why, why it's, it's in here. I thought as well as get rid of it all. Rely on the. Variant standards that we applied, everybody else for anything else, anywhere in the city, no matter if it's for a house or a business or a. Garage or a fence or whatever, they all have to satisfy the same variance criteria.
Prove to us you need to be a hardship in order for us to grant you that. Prove to us that you need this variance to survive. That's always been the case, and that's what the ZBA is for.
I feel like there, 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 there's always kind of this, you know, butting of heads between. Business community and the sign manufacturers and people like me, I'm a, planners and administrators always. Trying to rein in and kind of keep the lid on the size of these signs, and what concerns me about language like this is that. Think this is a lower bar to get a variance. And if, if, if it becomes kind of common place among sign manufacturers, will often be the ones applying for the signs that, hey. Let's what, we'll just go to the ZBA, we've got this special variance thing, we'll just go through there, we'll cut ourselves a direction thirty square feet, no problem. I don't want to, 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 to that point, what's the point of getting all the sign orders in the first place, because they're gonna let people do anything wrong. So I would err on the side of being more strict in the application of this thing, then, and that's why I'm, I'm proposing to take this stuff out.
Can't remember a time when we've denied a sign and it's been successfully appealed even using this. So I'm not sure that this language is necessary, it's not, it's, it's not been, it's not been an issue. Um, why, why promote this?
Yeah.
This easier path for something that we haven't really.
Burden is on them that wants a sign and the manufacturer, and let them. Provide the information that they feel.
To some clause we have to eat, and that's it. To some clause we have to eat, and that's it.
Only been an hour on this.
I'm forty-seven minutes. I'm very thrilled with this, I have to say. I mean, this is great.
Have anything other than the feather sign we even wanted to address?
That's it, that was. I'm ready to push it through, just. The thing with that, we might wanna give a a a little a little more thought too, and it. One of the trickier aspects of this is some of the other types of temporary signs that. Banners. Yeah, some of the streamers and stuff, so a a a lot of the typical. Temporary signs that we see now, so feather signs are super popular, but we've dealt with those, those are just not allowed anywhere. Someone had just hangs a vinyl banner outside of their business as a type of temporary sign.
They're very tacky.
Brand opening or something like that. Um, you're you're going to get people asking for temporary signage for. Their Labor Day sale on their top used cars or the. New outdoor nursery thing at Tractor Supply, and they're gonna wanna put up a banner, so. Um, some kind of temporary.
I don't think we're overall against temporary signs. We don't want temporary signs that are a moving distraction.
I got thirty days, once they put it up to have it down before we do anything. Fails over with.
Yeah, again, I just wanna be careful to not.
Right, and we we've had a tradition of having signs up on the um. On the crosswalk, temporary signs, I mean, it's. But you're looking at me like you'd want the tradition end, I'm fine with that, but if that's if that's an issue, but the point is, it's it's been an ongoing thing. I don't think. It's a huge deal to have temporary signs, but but we might wanna look at what kinds are allowed.
Temporary signs, we're thinking about. A little where. Like a political sign, right? It's just on a little wire, you just stick it in the ground. Those are gonna, or uh real estate signs, someone puts their house up for sale, a real estate agent comes over. Jams that, you know, L-shaped sign in the ground. Um, that has little hanging. Thing on it. Well, actually nowadays they have different signs, but. Stuff like that, those are probably the most common types of temporary signs that 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 we'll see, or if you get a new roof on your house. Roofers will often leave a little sign in your front yard that's a, you know, Joe's roofing. I'll leave it there until you get tired of it and take it out yourself and do it, but. Stuff like that, I think it is gonna be the most common type of temporary sign you deal with, but I do wanna make sure that we're at least adequately. During business community and the special events and the sales and those types of things that they'll want to promote. They'll do want to do it with with temporary signage, and I think we should have some accommodation for that. But obviously, you know. The air dancers would be considered inflatable signs, I think those aren't allowed. Uh, the feather signs aren't allowed, so 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 they look at banners or the way you're.
This also gets us back to the rubber meets the road question of what signs are the, is the city having trouble with? That, you know, that from from Darla's point of view. What makes your life easier? What doesn't make your life easier? What allows you to give? Give as much as you take and so that you can negotiate the thing you want. If I would, I would definitely want your opinion on what's gonna make smooth sailing while still having some standards.
I I don't know what signs.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't had many in the year and a half that I have been. That I've been. Here, I mean, we've only talked about a handful of them, and they were all pretty straightforward. It was like, yeah, no problem. Yeah, the one for the Village Learning Center was okay. Or for the taco place was fine. There was a couple of the ones that. Know that that I had a problem with any of them.
And all the cell signs in the B two have all been sandwich boards. Every time I drive down and I see a cell sign, it's always just a sandwich board sitting out on the. You know, and it looks fine. It's like, hey, we're having a sale. It's like, okay, cool. It's a sandwich board. You know, and Scott uses one every day. Scott's music, that's fine. It gets you to notice the building because it's flat. Doesn't project out any further, this the building doesn't, so. I think that that's fine. They're gonna use sandwich boards.
I have noticed, um, and even when you go on to like Google Street View. Out by. Up front of. Probably where McDonald's and stuff is. Look on Street View, there's actually someone that has a one of those black portable signs sitting right out by the road, and those are very clearly. Not permitted in your ordinance at all.
We were talking about earlier.
So a-again, those are 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 some of the things where we'll have to, you know, zoning enforcement officer will have to say, hey. This portable sign all of a sudden popped up overnight and wants to reach out to that business owner and say, uh-uh. That's gotta go, and so. And we can always modify this moving forward, but um. There's always that dynamics between every business always wants more signs, bigger signs, brighter lights.
We've, if we've smoothed it out and we're we're most the way there, um, and you wanna start. Solidifying this from 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 the input you've got tonight, then. When you have it ready again, we can probably. Start considering, we have to have a public hearing and all that stuff.
What do you think about the hundred square feet size?
Little huge.
Yeah.
Figure ten by ten, that's pretty much half of that wall right there.
Five square feet would be similar to the height of that wall squared.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen, um. Communities will do like, like I said. Never all of them. Greenville allows pretty big signs, Lowell, they're fifty. Um, unless it's like a multi-tennant commercial strip, in which case they allow.
The only ones that big would be like, there's a Speedway sign, and I think of Meyer, right? That would be the ones that are that big.
In township.
Oh, that's right, Myers in the township, but. And those are huge, those are way up there, because those are. Uh, freeway signs. Ten by ten, that's what I think of. That's a freeway sign. That's not a business sign.
Yeah, you really allow me, so you allow for pole signs up to fifty feet, but it's fifty feet or the. Building itself on a property, whichever five feet above the building on the site or fifty square. Square feet, whi- whichever it's less. Well, there's not any fifty fifty foot tall buildings out there anywhere. So all of them, your pole sign height is functionally going to be. And to be visible. On the highway, I mean, even if you're right on the uh. BMW or whatever, they're not gonna be able to do something tall enough that's a hundred feet off the ground.
We we really haven't got a sign where someone has not come to put that large of a sign up. Does, it's just not there.
Well, anymore there's those state of Michigan, we find things that.
Maybe lower the ground sign. Fifty square feet.
Yeah, so we could do, um, like a fifty or forty-eight, I think like, so forty-eight would be like a, you know, it's an eight by. Eight by six, yeah, so so you so you could do like a.
That's big, that's plenty, that's plenty sign for his ground sign, that's plenty big.
For like, what was it? O'Reilly's maybe, and they did a four by twelve, it was on a two-foot base. On a two-foot base, so six feet. Height, looks fine. Uh, and and so, yeah, forty-eight or fifty, I think for ground sign is is. As we're comfortable with, and we might not be creating too many non-conforming issues here, but there might be some.
They'll sort out.
I think that forty-eight for a ground sign is, that's plenty big.
I would say forty-eight for a wall sign as well, hundred square foot wall sign, that's pretty big.
Potential issue that we'll get with 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 wall signs is for the, is for businesses that are set way back up, though, but like. By the tractor supply and stuff that are. Set a good distance from the street. They will claim that fifty square feet is not readable from.
What do they make? They wanna build something in front of them anyway. But then they'll come back and want a tall sign.
Yeah, we could do fifty or sixty or something. I agree, a hundred square feet is pretty big. Especially on like a, on a smaller individual.
And you can definitely make a case where there are some highway commercial places that it might work, but certainly not downtown. If we need something that big, we have murals that are a hundred square feet downtown.
Alright.
All sign.
Yeah, for fifty, we don't want a sign, yeah.
All signs.
Hundred. I think part of the reason why um ground signs had a larger. Area, now that I'm thinking about it. The the city, I think, was trying to incentivize people to. Pull a sign, go with a ground sign, and say you'll get an extra. On the ground. So, um, not to completely reverse reverse course here, but if 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 we're gonna be more restricted, we might wanna be more. Restrictive on the pole sign and make that one like fifty. And then a ground sign, we would give like seventy-two or allow something a bit more, so we have an option for. Again, to incentivize someone, they want, they just want a big sign. Yeah, biggest one you can get is gonna be a ground sign, which I think is reducing the visual impact.
Okay.
That kinda thing, so that actually might make some more sense. Sounds a little bit. Cause on the ground, you're not.
Go, I think the issue then is like the, how far back there.
Yeah.
Wall sign.
I think downtown only we could do wall sign for fifty. Fifty. projecting sign at ten, which is what it is. Everything else is probably fine, yeah. Can't believe how much. Yeah. The only other question that I had in here, I think, was was about whether or not to see you want to require permits for temporary. Signage, and maybe we can focus more on temporary signage at the next meeting. Um, honestly, I can kind of go either way on that, because I think there's some value in having a temporary sign permit. Cause someone will come in, they'll apply, they'll say our sign is gonna be from. December fifteenth until December thirty-first, and then you know, if you go out there on January fourth and the sign is still there, hey, guess what? You know a hundred percent what the. Timeframe is for getting that thing out of there. It's more paperwork.
And we have to charge the school and the library.
School can do anything they want, and the library is government, and they can also do anything.
Okay. Alright, cause I'm like, I don't wanna charge the library.
They charge them to put the banner up?
The schools too, to put the banner up.
From basically everything.
But they they do pay us the seventy-five dollars per side for the banner across the sidewalk, across the.
Property.
Right.
Yeah.
Still, they're applicant, they're the applicant, but.
Their property without a, but once they start putting on on city property.
Oh, okay.
That's the only difference.
Yeah, and the library, I was just, I didn't make sure. Yeah, all this stuff, you know, the city doesn't have to follow its own rules, the school does, district doesn't have to follow the rules either for the most part. So.
Oh, we're good with with the, we're first tonight at least?
I think so.
Like I was telling Clint, I'm very pleased. I really appreciate the hard work. It is so much easier to look at this, and I think that a person that's coming in. That wants to start a business could actually look at this ordinance and. I think they could actually understand it. The way it was before, there's no way. And so I really appreciate, cause I can look at it and go, oh, okay, I understand that.
Alright, the next item under other business, ten B is the joint meeting with Soul and Township, proposed for either January twenty-fourth or Jan- or February twenty-eight. Um, at Soul and Township Hall.
Yeah, I emailed, our request back to them was, um. November twenty-eighth, December twelfth, or December nineteenth, seven o'clock here at City Hall. Their response was. Uh, because of the existing schedule to the end of the year, the planning commission would like to schedule a meeting either January or February of twenty twenty-four. Their meeting dates are Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, or Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, at seven thirty. The meeting date will have to be posted as well, and they prefer the meeting at the Township Hall.
So I have a question about that. We video our. If I understand correctly, it's city council policy that we video our meetings. So I'm not ready to break a policy. In not videoing one of our public meetings.
There's a pendulum. The council deemed that all meetings will be pumped or will be recorded. Whether. They put it on Skype out there or whatever, it has to be.
I would need to, I would need to have a. For that. Before, uh, before we commit to a date.
I can ask them if they can accommodate our policy.
Okay. Then, uh, I guess we'll move to open discussion for issues not on the agenda, um, correspondence. Something in the correspondence, um, that we need to address, anything new? Okay, then I'll move on to, um, staff comments. Team manager?
Um, I have a few tonight, so just for information, we received our first, um. Solar panel permit application. They want to install, um. It was six or eight panels. On a roof. Address is in Pioneer Trail. Eight panels on a roof. Well, I scanned this in just tonight after, at the end of my day, so. See how to move it forward.
Okay.
NYI.
That's awesome.
Um, I can, in the process of, um. Reviewing the animal control ordinance, uh Sergeant Propst and I met with, uh, Lieutenant Wheeler from Kent County. He looked at our ordinance, provided us the Kent County ordinance. Um, we want to adopt the Kent County ordinance for animal control, so they will take care of them. But there's pieces left of that, our ordinance that we need to move to another section in order to keep to enforce. So we're working on that. Working on hiring a new fire chief, uh, we need city council to approve an updated job description for that, that will hopefully happen, um, December fourteenth. And we can post that job internally. I had a discussion with one of the marijuana businesses today. This is not new, it's been discussed a couple times at the DDA meetings. Some of them would like us to amend our ordinance to allow. Couple things, like Friday, Saturday nights to be open maybe till ten o'clock and still nine instead of nine. And then would the council consider amend the ordinance to, um. And then, would the council consider amending the ordinance to, um. If there was a special event, especially in the social district downtown. That allows alcohol to be, you know, consumed in the social district. Could the marijuana businesses in the social district be open the same hours as the special event? Whether it's ten o'clock or eleven o'clock, midnight, whatever, um, New Year's Eve is what they were looking for, but. We can't get an ordinance amendment before New Year's Eve, so. That's the request, we can consider it and work on it next year, but.
Boom during that time, it's just open for sales.
Open for sales, yeah. So I'm working on that. From the last planning commission meeting where we talked about, um, accessory buildings in the B two. And the quadplexes, the special land use, that's still on my to-do list to work on them. And then, um. What are your thoughts on a amending our ordinance? Possibly go to a one-hauler garbage service system? Discuss, a one-hauler. Right now, we have a preferred vendor for garbage pickup, but all vendors are welcome in the city of Cedar Springs. So we have multiple companies, garbage trucks driving on our streets five days a week. If we reduce that to one hauler, it reduces that heavy truck traffic. In on our city streets.
My problem with that is competitive rates. Cause then if you just have one truck service that comes in for the city, then they can just charge whatever the heck they wanna charge. You know, and then the other thing is.
The city would, we would have to go out for RFPs, so they know they would be servicing the whole city.
If anything, they might give you a more competitive rate because they're going to want to provide a a. Discount basically for being the sole provider of the entire city.
Right.
Quite a few communities do it.
This is many trucks on the street. It would, because they could go one, one at a time and not have to have such distance.
Day city wise, so we only only have one day a week where you have garbage trucks running all over city streets, and then that's it, cause right now, if you have. Waste management and you have, uh. Yeah, all these other ones, like.
Yeah.
For some of them, it trash day could be Tuesday, the next one trash day could be Wednesday, the next day trash day could be Thursday, and every day of the week. At six AM, people might get annoyed with having a garbage truck driving up and down the street, whereas with one hauler. You've got one. A slightly better rate, then there's one day a week where the trash comes and everyone's stuff is out, and then the rest of the week.
But when we went to preferred, or the the current hauler we have now. Uh, they did give a special reduced rate for preferred haulers for within the city. There was some pushback from the other. Vendors to not go to a preferred hauler.
But we're, we're out of contract right now, so we we don't have a contract with anybody.
But they did give us a very nice rate through a lot of years.
And then they, I mean, they. Were Arrow when we made the original contract with them, yeah, so, um. Yeah, I'm, I'd be interested in seeing what kind of bids we could get, I mean, and. As long as we continue to have the, you know, upper level of service that we can still have recycling and the other things, the. I would, I wouldn't wanna give up, I wouldn't wanna be forced to give up the recycling service I'm paying for if I didn't have that from a. From a, from a required.
First, so we we couldn't choose language that allows us to offer one. One vendor if we choose, we don't, we don't, we can be. In the ordinance, right? We can look at the language and see what it would require.
Big benefit to a single hauler would be during the spring thaw. When all the heavy trucks are running on the road, you have so many of them, they'll start busting up our streets, where you have one day a week. Eliminates a lot of the heavy truck traffic, big time.
And again, if you logically, if you just say five different companies are moving through the entire city. Even if they, even if you, even if it takes the same number of trucks, they're going. One at a time, house to house to house, instead of bouncing, driving all the way here, bouncing all over here.
Yeah.
Plus, they're moving slow and it's not a high impact.
Are there any cities that do this? So they don't have any outside, they just have one service, you don't get to pick, you either pay for this service or you take it. To the landfill yourself. Okay, I I've never, I've never dealt with that, so I was like, oh.
Um, cause a lot of people get really annoyed with four days a week, it's.
It is, it it is kind of annoying. As long as you can, you know, you're you're, they're bidding for a contract with the city that has to be renewed. Uh, you know, if they don't, if they try to jack up the rates too much, someone else is gonna come in and take it. That, okay, so that makes sense, but then.
I think the big thing would be to maintain yard waste. That's very nice, we have, and that was one of the reasons that Arrow came, was because they did have the yard waste. Because the city at one time did pick up all that yard waste, and to reduce costs, they went with Arrow. Who have that service provided.
I forgot about that.
Been here too long, I know all the secrets.
The last thing I have, um, I wanted to share, we will not have a January ninth planning commission meeting. We'll both be out of town, so.
Okay.
Don't have anything submitted where we have to, you know, set a public hearing, so.
I'll I'll struggle through. We can't run wild by ourselves, I guess.
To study signs.
Another month to read over this.
Yeah. Okay, and then in that case, uh, any comments from the city clerk? Thank you. All right, um, then it's planning commission members, any comments from Gina Gallery?
Thank you for all the hard work you put on that, that sign ordinance.
Yes.
I'm kind of a, like, as a teacher, I've had to write a lot of documents and format them so that they were clear, so I didn't have a kid asking me what I mean here. And I I can say I can appreciate watching all the edits through there, it was, it was a kind of a thing of beauty, actually, so.
Yes.
Um, so thank you for that.
What else?
Okay, um. Uh, reporter, the city council representative, we don't have unless we wanna deputize Rose, you have the thing?
Well, at least it couldn't make it tonight, so.
Yeah, make sure, don't rob the store, I can see it, and, um, reporter, the planning consultant.
Um, I think last time I was here, I mentioned that the, uh, the wind, solar and battery. Uh, legislation that was passed through the House, that's been signed, that's law now, it doesn't go into effect for about a year. Um, probably not gonna have huge impacts on the city specifically because these are utility scale systems that are being preempted. Um, but it wouldn't surprise me to see battery storage facilities going in in townships, um, and places like that. We actually also caught wind of, um, another bill that could impact the city again, probably less so you guys than than townships, but it would. Um, change the number of splits that you are entitled to under the Land Division Acts, so. Right now, if you have ten acres of land, you get four splits for your first ten acre, and then you get one split for your next additional whole ten after that. So, what has passed the Senate, I would change that four splits for the first ten acres to twenty splits for the first ten acres. Because they think that by accelerating the land division process, they can reduce. Fidelity costs and get affordable housing, or to help reduce the cost of housing, I don't really buy it personally, I don't think it's gonna have that effect. But that's the intent, I don't know if that's going to get all the way through the legislative process, it's in House Committee right now, but. It passed the Senate like thirty to six or something, like it was a strong bipartisan majority in the. So, it's not something that is. You know. Not a law yet, but it's, we're definitely keeping, keeping an eye on that, that that would be potentially transformational. In a big way to allow that kind of split by right. We'll keep an eye on that one again, not necessarily going to have huge impacts in the city since you're, um. Partially built out, but I mean, there you have, there are a few large parcels here and there still. And, yeah, we wanna make sure that we're on top of that if we need to be.
Parcels adjoining the city that could be four twenty five then, that that would, that that would.
Yeah, or someone could just. You still have to build roads to serve, you know, twenty lots and stuff, but I mean, still twenty lots by right.
Top of margins.
Without review, without plating, without kind of minimizing. It 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 got our attention, it's looked that way, so we'll be keeping an eye on it.
Barely impact your water and sewer extensions and connections.
Oh, yeah.
Means in that area.
Or in plain field. Very carefully controlled growth using. The requirements to extend utilities and something. You know, turns that loose. It could be controlled, but it makes, it was, it makes life more stressful on that, so we'll see what happens.
Um, well, in that case, um, I guess that means we're adjourned.